You guys, you need any time? Okay, no, I wasn't sure whether you guys were finished with your conversation. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for coming today. Call this work session in the New Shoreham Town Council to order. Today is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025. It is 4:00 PM on the button. Amy, do you want to take us away on item one?
I'm gonna turn it over to the departments. I think it will just go in order of the agenda, which means we start to talk about the summer wrap up with Kate.
Hey, Kate.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. If you don't really have anything specific you want to ask me, I can just go through my report I just sent to Amy.
Wonderful. Just go through it, Kate.
Well, we were awarded title of the best harbor in the US for the second year in a row.
Nicely done.
We are very proud of that, and that includes Old Harbor. That's not just New Harbor. I considered this year with my staff to be a growth period as I lost about four core members that have been with me for about seven years. So we've got some new people coming through the ranks, and they're doing a great job. I think the most significant incident that happened all summer was the weather incident on July 3rd. Just having that many boats in the anchorage and docked up in Old Harbor was really significant. So, working with my team, working with the boaters that were out on their boats, it could have been a lot worse. No injuries, a lot of fiberglass repairs.
Yeah.
But other than that.
That was a crazy blow.
We only, I was only called to two noise complaints in New Harbor all summer. And there were two in Old Harbor and one welfare check that I was part of. I don't know if Paul has any other details on those. We only responded to three rescue calls in New Harbor and none in Old Harbor.
Okay.
So that is down from last year.
Kate, can I ask you a quick question on the noise complaints? Were they from an establishment or a private?
Private, someone on a boat.
Okay, thank you.
More, it was more in the anchorage, actually. Yep. We had 22 notices of violations this year compared to 26 last year. Four were issued for shellfishing infractions, and then the other 18 were for speeding, wrong mooring, you're dragging anchor, something like that. One big issue I had was with the patrol boat this year. We had a pretty significant transmission problem, and it was pretty much out of commission for the whole year. Which, now that the season is over, I'm glad that we didn't need to utilize it as much as we normally do.
What do you do? Tow it over and then have it fixed there?
No, I actually have a really good connection now with a marine mechanic, and he came over and did the work for us.
Wow, that's fabulous. That's great.
Didn't have to haul it.
Wow.
So it's out of the water right now for the season, but we'll be up and running for the spring.
Great.
And it should be running great.
Is that at an age where it is, systems like that are gonna...
I...
You know what I mean?
I honestly think that that may have been the original transmission.
Yeah.
So we're lucky that it lasted as long as it needed. So, you know, my predecessor and myself, we do all of our maintenance in-house as much as we can. And my first few years, it's been a learning experience, but, you know, it's also saving costs when you understand what's happening with your own boat.
Yes, absolutely.
So... We continue to work out of the shack in New Harbor. I would love to have a nicer office at some point. I understand that there's other projects going on in the town that might, you might think has more priority, but I just want, I don't want my facility or the harbors facility to always be on the back burner.
I think that's fair. If you, God, why would you? But if you, if you watch the YouTube video of our meeting on Monday night, we actually had a meeting with Turtle and Barbara to sort of talk about work that has been done and needs to be done in terms of layout, et cetera, so that, I mean, I think it's fair to say, so that, so that when, when the magic happens, when, you know, when money, when we can find the money, we're ready to go. So, you know, I think, I think everybody is, I think that percolated up this week. So I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned it, Kate. Thank you.
Moving over to Old Harbor, so we do have the dredge project in New Harbor that we had the monies for the engineer and the original, and the primary preliminary surveying. So I hope that that gets done this fall, going into the winter, and then next fall we'll be able to actually dredge, get the material out of there. Old Harbor, Doc Master Josh Moore did an amazing job yet again this year. I believe it was his 18th year down there. I certainly could not manage both harbors without him. So I really want to commend him on that. Dredging continues to be the biggest issue down there, and if all goes well, we are going to be piggybacking on Ballard's Marina dredging project, which is happening in a couple of weeks. So Army Corps is working with us to expedite the permit process.
Great. Remind me where our next dredge is in Old Harbor? Where will we be?
Where is it gonna be dredging? And this will be from the waterside, the channel going into
Okay.
the inner basin and by the old bait dock.
Yep.
About no more than a thousand yards of material, which we would then be able to utilize for the dunes on Corn Neck. So we're kind of killing two birds with one.
Right.
That's land bait vessel.
That's gonna be, they, no, they have a barge coming in, so that'll be waterside. Still working on what our cost would be piggybacking on their project.
Right.
One other thing that we're trying to keep up on is the electrical pedestals down there and electric upgrades to keep us in compliance with the fire marshal and the larger boats that are coming.
Yeah.
Shellfishing.
Sorry, the electric upgrades, are they just, are they happening over time or?
Yep, so we started two years ago, replaced at least two of the pedestals. And the town electrician is taking the old ones and he's...
Refurbishing?
Thank you. Refurbishing them, so that we either have them for parts or they'll actually be able to replace one of the worst pedestals that we have.
So we have those as backups?
Correct.
Nice.
And they are expensive, so it's just gonna be a continual line item that you see.
How, how many are there? You said there were two replaced already?
There's nine on the, I know that there's nine on the commercial side. Fifteen? Yeah, maybe 18 overall, maybe? I'm not quite sure.
Josh would know that. I was curious. I had no idea.
So the service is staying the same? It's just strictly the pedestals?
I believe we had already upgraded the service a couple of years ago. And so now it's getting the pedestals to catch up because originally we only had 30 amp service. And now we're, now we've got 50 amp, and so we're replacing and upgrading the pedestals as we go as well.
Okay? Shellfishing is crazy, crazy popular. I still can't believe how much money we make off of it. And it's honestly, it's a tradition for some people, and then you get day chippers that come into the shack and they're like, we want to go clamming today. And they have no idea what they're doing, but they go out there, they're greeted with the shellfish wardens. The three that I had this year were seasoned. They've worked with me for at least three years each. So, you know, it's great having them out on the water. And one thing that Warden Bill Johnson wanted to reiterate is that when they do give a warning, they're not seeing that second violation, and it's really a learning experience for people out there. We're not out there to ruin somebody's day.
Right. Is it usually size of clams?
It is the, yes, taking of undersized clams. The Shellfish Commission has a ton of awesome projects going on. I don't want to hit on all of them, but they are being very active. It's a fantastic group, and I believe all of the chairs that are coming up for renewal this year, I think they're all gonna stay on, which is great. And the Harbors Committee is already beginning to review the harbor management plan, which we have four years, no, no, this is good. We have four years before it comes up again. So they're being very proactive to, to...
That's great. Can I ask you just a side question on the Shellfish Commission? How is the, the soft shell clam reintroduction experiment going?
It's going. You know, where, where we have Dr. Roxanne, I'm sorry, I don't know her last name, and she, she came out with some students from Brown. And so we have that whole group of students who are very intrigued with what we're doing out here, and they're using it as a platform to do more research.
That's great.
So they're growing. It's slow, but they are, they are growing.
Great.
And I believe Mona can give my, the revenue and all the numbers that I have.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've seen the numbers as, the monthly reports, and everything is trending up either because it's been great seasons, and then you've done a pretty rigorous job of staying on top of rate increases in the harbors. So, you know, costs and revenues and expenses are fairly well matched.
Kate, I think you do an extraordinary job.
Thank you.
I'm really proud to have you as a member of the ministry. I really am.
Okay. Anything else?
Any questions for Kate?
I have a question about Old Harbor. Do we have cameras down there yet?
We do not have cameras down there yet, and that is one of the budget items that I put in for, for money. Two, two new lights, one on the commercial dock, streetlight on the commercial dock, and one on the old bait dock because those areas are very dark. And then I would like to have a camera system down there. Dave is also gonna mention that he wanted camera systems at the pavilion there? I'm sorry. Yeah, the beach pavilion. So if we can combine those two projects with the same vendor, then it would be a lot more cost effective.
Yeah, I think that would be important with some of the activities that have happened down there. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, you next?
Hello, board. What are you doing?
Hey, Paul. So our, you know, the overall, I think from, from the summer, we started out a little bit slow in terms of visitor wise from, and I think it was more weather driven because we really kind of had some poor weather in, in May and June. And then when July came, the weather got nice and nicer and nicer, and then it got really dry. But it was great visitor weather, because there weren't a whole lot of rainy days. And we, we had, I think, a really busy people wise, August, month of August. But I think the overall behavior, as we've been talking about a lot this year, has gotten a lot better. I think some of the shenanigans that we've seen in years past is starting to wane. I think some of it is that people have gotten the message that we're not tolerated with that anymore. So, overall, it went really well. Our staffing, we had five full-time community service officers, and we had one part-time. The part-time was one of our high school seniors, Johanna. She came and worked on the weekends with us. She worked for Dave, I believe, in the rec department during the week, and she came and worked the weekends for us. She's thinking about getting into law and law school, and she thought that would be an interesting, you know, thing, thing to experience the law enforcement side of it. So it was really kind of nice to have one of our local kids that's, you know, has pretty much grown up here come and work for us. We have an intern for the senior projects for the police department. She's gonna come and spend, you know, the winter doing their, their senior mentor stuff with us. And she's also, they're originally from Connecticut, but she's kind of really trying to talk her mother into being able to stay next summer and, and come work for us. So it's, it's kind of nice to have some of our, our local younger kids that are, that are getting involved in, in this. The, you know, they, they work, obviously you see them in town. And as each summer goes by, I look at how we use them and how we could better use them, how we can kind of spread them out a little bit, and different, little different things that I would like to try with them. In this past summer, we did a little bit more between Bridgegate Square and down in the Payne Stock area, you know, and over in the ore with the parking, parking enforcement and Bridgegate Square, just so they're visible there. And you do see the behavior changes when, when people see anyone in uniform. They tend to stop at the stop sign, so that's always good. We had, we got short-staffed in our dispatch this summer. We took two of our community service officers, and we trained them in dispatch, and they actually helped us cover shifts in dispatch this summer, and that was a huge, huge help. Because we had one resigned and went to, he moved to California with his, with his family, and he was, he was really good, and we missed Bert. We had another resigned in August, so we were down two dispatchers for almost the, you know, a good part of the summer. And it left us with three. That's all we had. And, and I will say it publicly, that they all stepped up and worked the overtime. They worked the extra shifts, and same with Beth. You know, Beth spent a lot of time with our CSOs in there covering dispatch and covering shifts, and we're still doing it because we're still short. But the staff that we have has been phenomenal in stepping up and doing what we need to do because somebody has to sit in that seat. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Somebody, you know, it's, it's like the, you know, somebody has to put this uniform on. Somebody has to sit in that seat and answer the phone. We have to have somebody there, and, and they have done it. We've all done it. I've been doing shifts in dispatch for two and a half months because we have to. It's what we're, it's what we need to do, but it's good as our team, it's a team thing. We're all doing it, and people are starting to want to take vacations. And, you know, everybody's, everybody's stepping up and kind of doing, doing the right thing and helping out. We do have one person right now that is being trained. She owns a business here on the island. She, they typically leave in December and they come back in April, but she's willing to come and help us out in the shoulder seasons. So having, you know, somebody in our bullpen, so to speak, is, is gonna be huge down the road.
How extensive is the training?
What's that?
How extensive is the training?
It's not that it's expensive.
No, ex-
Oh, extensive.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, and some of that, honestly, Keith, some of it is dependent upon the person.
Right.
Right? Because it-
And whether they have any experience with emergency-
Yeah, and it, it takes time to learn the radios and, and the computer systems and all of that other stuff. And learning to be able to listen to somebody panicking on the phone and not panic yourself, but ask the right questions and start pushing buttons for the radio to get ambulances, fire trucks, and policemen going where they need to go. And, and some of it is, you can teach anybody the computer part of it, all of those things. It's the trial by fire. When, when it hits the fan and you're the one that's having to sit there, figure out who do I need to send first and where.
Right.
That's the hard part.
Right.
And not everybody can do it.
Sure.
So that's also part of the problem, trying to fill those.
Sure.
We have a woman that's coming from Chicago that's gonna move out here and I think gonna be here for a while. She is actually starting next week.
Oh, great.
And she wants to be here full-time year round, but we're still one short.
Right.
And, you know, we, we've been advertising since June.
Yep.
And it's like everything else out here, Highway Department, they've been, I think, short-staffed.
How many years? Like, two, three?
And it's, I don't see that getting any better or any easier in the very near future. So it's something we all need to kind of start thinking about. On our full-time staff, our full-time year-round union guys, Phil Trudell, as most of you know, graduated from the Police Academy in May, and he has spent the winter under the tutelage of Officer Walsh doing his field training, and Phil's kind of, kind of flowing right in with this. And I think he's gonna be a really good, long-term fit for our community because he likes it here. He and his wife and, and the baby, they love being here, and they like being part of the community, and that's important. Joe and Tom, you know, I just keep throwing more things at Joe since I became chief. He's started to do more of the things that I used to do, and he just, you know, doesn't, doesn't blink, just says, yes, sir, and off he goes. Tom's been here also for, I think, a dozen, 15 years, and he's a night guy. And I don't, I don't worry about the nights with those guys working, which is, which is really kind of nice. Our, our biggest issue is the, you know, non-union summertime, seasonal guys. We raised the rate this year.
Yeah.
We had zero applicants.
Oh, really?
None. And, and that's, and that's, and I said this for a while, I kind of knew this coming into becoming chief. That was gonna be a challenge for me because I see what's going on on the mainland, you know, and and we're just gonna keep pushing through. There was, there was a lot of times this summer, it was just myself and one other officer on duty. And it, it makes it, you know, it makes it really tough to be proactive.
Yeah.
Which I really like to be. I don't like being just reactive. But we only can go get stretched out so much. Fourth of July, we had obviously that large crowd of young folks that came in, decided to party on our beach. We managed, knock on wood, to kind of keep that contained and controlled and got them all back where they came from without any major incidents. I don't think we even ran an extra boat that night to do it. So, you know, that was good. I definitely have some strategies that we are gonna work on for next year because it's just not something that we, we are gonna tolerate. It's just, it's just not.
The only thing in my notes tonight was, you know, it's, may not be today, but at some point soon, to the extent that you're comfortable, I think it would be worth talking about, you know, sort of what the messaging is, how to do that. Interstate, when we had our annual meeting with Interstate, they were very responsive to, you know, having a conversation about what they could, you know, what, how they could help, so.
Right. And I think some of the, and I think-
recognition of the challenge.
Yeah, and I think some of that too is just, you know, we can have a closed session because there are some things that, you know, I can discuss with you, not necessarily in public right away, that-
Absolutely.
Just so you know what we're kind of, kind of road that we're, that we're heading down.
So on that topic-
But this is not-
Someone during, so next year, the Fourth of July is on a Saturday.
Yep.
Which feels kind of like a powder keg, but also if we had that meeting with Interstate, if we could have a similar meeting with the New London Ferry to talk about the same issues, I think that would be important.
I would say the more important thing would be just what you just said, having only two officers and not being able to be proactive. So you must have, you're gonna have some time this winter to come up with some strategies for that.
And I think, you know, what we've always done in the past, because we, we focused a lot of our assets on the parade, and that's gonna be a piece of this, is the parade is still gonna get our attention, but more, that beach is gonna get way more of our attention, and that's what needs to happen, so.
I guess my thing is beyond, maybe not the fourth, but the fifth, the sixth.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But we're, we're just gonna keep trying to cross those bridges as we get there, and it's, it's a matter of, you know, trying to figure out what is gonna make it attractive to come here. And, you know, we talked about this before, that you can sit over on the mainland doing road details, sit in a car and do absolutely nothing all day and make $70 an hour and be home every night. And that, that's the hard part, you know? And then you balance it between, do you raise it to a point where everybody wants to come here and do it? But then you also have your guys that are here year round looking at it going, how is this fair?
Yeah.
Right? So, so we need to, we need to find some kind of balance in that, and we will. Amy, Amy and I have talked about these things a couple of times, and, and she keeps going, well, if we, how about we try this? We're gonna keep working on it. All right, so we had really just like two major events this year. The house explosion, you know, down on West Beach Road and the unfortunate fatality of the plane crash, you know, down at the end of the runway, and you know, from, from my standpoint of looking at this now, not just kind of as the policeman, but as the police chief, but watching the fire- But watching the fire rescue response to these things and they are all volunteers, they give their own time, they do their own thing because they care about their community. But in the work that I'm in, the things that I've seen on the mainland trainings that I've attended. And watching what our people do when the bell rings. It's honestly, it's pretty amazing that in, in such a small, little place that we have a core group of people that can respond to the most horrific little tragedies that we have out here sometimes and do it so well. And so calmly, it, it's, um, you know, I was kind of hoping Fire Rescue had theirs today, I was gonna let them talk about it, but you know, just kudos to those guys, because they, they just, they do just such a tremendous job with their stuff, because they care. Our calls for service over the course of Memorial Day to Labor Day has been starting to trend downward, which is good. Um, it, it's, it's an indication of better behavior and, you know, people are kind of just you know, in twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-one hundred calls for service between May and Labor Day. And this past summer, it was only seventeen, seventeen oh three. So it's, it's a pretty precipitous drop, which is, um, you know, when you look at the same numbers of people that are coming here pretty consistently, I think, over the past four or five years. To have that drop in, in calls for services is kind of a, it's a nice trend to see. We don't want to see it go up, we want to see it go down. And our, everything else has followed, you know, our, our arrests for the summer are way down. You know, ticket numbers for the most part are, are down also, but parking tickets were good.
How's the new parking ticket system?
That was, it's a little bit further down, that, that actually worked out good. We didn't, no, and that's fine, we didn't really get it implemented until the first week in August. Because it just, it took a little time to get all the parts and pieces and all that. The feedback that I got from our, our community service officers, they liked it. It's a little, it, a little more time consuming on their part. Because they're not just whipping out a pen and starting scribbling. They're, you know, opening, opening up their mobile device, opening the app and then, you know, putting in the information. But it prints, it prints, it worked real well, the online payment part of it worked really, really well. And I think our, our compliance with that was, I think, a little bit better than, than years past, numbers-wise, so. I'm really looking forward to see what that will bring us next year when we have an entire and, you know, if we've talked about it in different meetings, that we can use that system for other things within the town. So it'll be good. Think that'll work out well. Mopeds. We had twenty-one, we did twenty-one crash reports this summer. And that's all within the average, we've gone, you know, in the past five years from eighteen to twenty-six, so we're kind of in that ballpark. That's something that not sure how we're gonna get there, but that one seems to stay pretty, pretty consistent year to year. And I think maybe with our new traffic commission, uh, the safety committee. That we might be able to come up with some strategies to, uh, kind of take that, um. Noise, we all spent an awful lot of time on noise this summer, so we're not gonna go too far with that. But the establishments that had outdoor entertainment, when we had any issues, they were all really good. Excuse me, about working with us and listening to the complaints and, and doing that, so. Like we're also heading down the right road on that. And, and it's you know, it's, it's twenty thousand people out here in the summer and when you only have a thousand in February and you can hear the crickets from the mainland, summer's busy, summer's busy and it's noisy and, and I get it. I'm fortunate, I have a quiet little hideaway down at the end of Coast Guard Road, so. That's pretty much it. I mean, all in all, I think we, you know, we had, we had a good summer. I think we're trending in the right direction in terms of, you know, our open containers. The message that we've sent about that for the past couple of years, I think is, is starting to be heard. And, and as I said, I think our, our behavior overall has just gotten better.
Any questions for Paul? I had one quick one, uh, what was your experience with the, uh, low-speed vehicles this summer?
We really didn't have any issues with them at all. We had, we had, um, we had one accident uh, right by the springhouse and I think it was a matter of just somebody kind of, kind of taking the turn a little too quick. The amount of people that I have seen this summer. Where, and this may not be a hundred percent right, right or wrong. Where there's an adult on either side and there's a younger child sitting in the middle, and I just think to myself that I'll be on mopeds and that little kid would be on the back like this, hanging on for dear life. And, and from that aspect of it, I liked seeing them, just because of the amount of people that I saw as families in them. And, and you always are gonna have the groups of people that get in them and, and whatever, but the you know, like I said, it's, it's seeing the little kid in that and not on the back of a moped or the front of a moped. I just, I feel it's just way safer. And in terms of, you know, overall on the road, Keith, they're they're not as wide as a car. And one of the things that kind of irks me a little bit, but it really irks my wife. Is when people try to pass bicycles and they cross the W O line and go into your lane of travel. You really don't get that with those, the little golf carts, because they're so much narrower. So there's a little bit of that, you know, piece of it too.
Did you find that it damped overall speed? I mean, because that was something that I, I sort of noticed was, was a, was a weird ancillary benefit from them. Is, you know, they're harder to, you, you're not as inclined to pass them as, as, you know, uh, with mopeds and bicycles and therefore because their speed is restricted.
It's, it's right, it, it keeps everybody, it keeps everybody down at twenty-five where they should be.
Not that I ever drive over twenty-five.
Except on that new paved section of Beacon Hill.
Fortunate to have only, you said, one incident with the L S V? Those four or five occupants all ejected? Those occupants were all ejected from that?
I don't, I don't know a hundred percent Tristan to give you an honest answer on that.
And then I guess I would just add, I, I wonder if those patients were flown to higher, um, medical care, other than the medical
I don't, I don't think they were. I'll, I'll look and, and check.
The last one for me was, so seventeen hundred, how many arrests? How many arrests total?
We had six for the entire summer.
Any other questions for Paul? Paul, thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Can I ask one really quick question, Paul? I forgot, um, the, remember we had an issue with the camera in one of our cells? Was that ever?
Yes, that's, that, that was
That's all back up to speed?
That, um, when we had an issue with that, I actually just got notification from the court. That person is going, they, they arrested him, he didn't show up for court, they had a warrant for him, they arrested him. Um, we're trying to get restitution from that, but the following spring, we got hit by lightning for the thirteenth time in five years, like destroyed everything, so a lot of things got replaced, um, in that, in that time frame. And I'm glad you brought up cameras, because Kate and I have also had a conversation about the cameras down around Old Harbor Dock. You know, and she and I talked a little bit and I know that, you know, Bill's kind of a camera wizard, he's got them on Interstate and all that kind of stuff. So I think that at some point, it might be worth sitting down and, and having a conversation um, with Bill about, because there are a couple of places in town.
I agree.
You know, I think, I think Dave, you know, is looking at
I'd like him on Walden's Way.
Yeah, well, that's, that's where I want him. Um, and I know that, you know, Kate, Kate has a need for it and, and I think Dave does too, so I think we just, um, okay.
Would you envision these, would they be for review or do you think, I mean, we're all on camera nowadays, would they go into the central dispatch?
So, I, I'm gonna jump in here, because I think we're talking about two different things. Um, we're talking about some cameras to protect town property, specifically Old Harbor Dock, Town Beach. And an example of Walden's Way is a little bit different. So I think we will be talking about those, but they'll be talking about two parallel paths, uh, with different policy implications.
And that, and that's gonna be the part of it, the policy, the, the policy is actually probably the hardest part of, of, of getting this right. Um, than actually getting camera systems together.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Welcome, Mike.
Afternoon. Like Paul had, uh, mentioned, uh, the road crew was down, uh, most of the summer, two, two, uh, employees. So, uh, there was a few times I tried to step in when possible for a few different, primarily in the month of June with the, the flail work.
I think you just liked that flail more, Mike.
Too slow, it's like the sweeper, just too slow, I wish it'd go faster. Also on, uh, July fourth, um, that was probably, or it was obviously the largest cleanup we had to do. Throughout the summer, there wasn't any tremendous trash issues. Uh, we do the morning cleanup on the beaches. No huge issues with that, you know, it's always, uh, primarily closer to town. Across from the beachhead to the surf, we'll find the majority of the trash in that area than we do the entire rest of the beach. There's always stuff, but nothing, nothing huge. But July fourth, of course, is, um, a little different. Now, this year, Joe Picraca had, um, uh, set up prior to the fourth, uh, vehicles down there, so we could get in and out of there as quickly as possible. Um, and they picked up, uh, with the help of a lot of volunteers, which made it really quick, uh, about three thousand pounds of trash. Um, that went right down to the, uh, transfer station. Um, like I said, the early morning cleanup, we, this is, I think, the third or fourth year we've been doing that, where one of the guys goes in, does the beach, uh, the bluffs, different beach accesses, um, right downtown. Parks, all the town properties and touristy areas, um, again, there's always trash, but there was no big disasters this year.
Mike, he's out early, I'm, I'm down there early in the morning and your guys down there, six thirty in the morning, um, every day, you see them through town, they do a good job.
Yep, thank you. As you may know, we maintained the, uh, the bluffs area for, um, the D E M. Again, no huge trash issues, uh, what, the problems we did have there though was we had multiple repairs of the stairs. Emergency repairs to that. And unfortunately, they tend to happen on the weekend when there's a thousand people going up and down. But, uh, the guys were great, they, uh, again, what they did is they had a lot of pieces pre-made and set up at the, uh, at the garage, so when we did get a call, they just grabbed it and went down there. Um, many of these, uh, the stair treads are just, they're all worn out. Multiple things, it's not vandalism by any means, it's just they're worn out. Um, I do anticipate that we'll probably start conversations with D E M for the plans going forward. Um, beginning of this past summer, our conversations with D E M was, let's get them open this year. But we gotta come up with a better plan for going forward, are we gonna rebuild them, are we gonna shorten them up, you know, eliminate them? Um, a lot of it is in their hands, but, uh, I think now is, we're probably gonna start the talks with them to get something set up, so it's all ready for, uh, next summer. The mansion bathrooms are getting, it seems like every time I have a report here, I'm reporting on the mansion bathrooms and each time is more and more use, um, which is great, we've had to upgrade them with a solar panel. Uh, an extra solar panel, um, uh, uh, extra batteries. And this year, we burnt out a pump, uh, the, the, one of the flush pumps. Um, we had two of them on backup, so it was a quick changeover, able to put that in. But we're also going to add a second pump in there, so to be able to keep up with the flushing, the one pump was just, wasn't enough, so. Still feeling it out, but I think it's all a good thing. And what I think is happening down there, I think the beach has become more popular because there is a bathroom down. Whereas in years past, I think people probably stayed closer to the town beach, uh, for that, especially with kids and all that sort of thing. It was a very dry summer, as we all know, uh, which in a lot of ways is very advantageous for us. Uh, for road repairs on the, on the dirt roads, um. But the dry, dryness also causes that washboard effect, which we got a lot of calls on that and you can fix that and it's back in less than twenty-four hours, yeah, when, when it's that dry. Won't have that problem anymore. The thing that the, the crew finds most difficult is trying to get anything done. Is because of the crowds, we are so limited in the time of day of when we can, you know, do a project, we're becoming, like Paul said, we're more reactive than proactive in the summertime now. We've got to get as much done before ten A M. as we possibly can. Um, it's just, it's just so difficult to get anything done. Transfer station, I'm working closely with Sean, uh, on, on a bunch of different issues and all that. And we had a pretty interesting conversation the other day and, um, he said in that, the, the two months, July, August, primarily six to eight weeks. That the transfer station is at its max, it cannot handle anymore. And he's afraid, you know, if there's a hiccup.
When, when you say handle, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when you say handle anymore, any more trash or any more traffic, you know, you know, like
A combination of everything. Incoming and outgoing. He does get concerned, uh, that, you know, if there's a hiccup, if a machine goes down or a compactor goes down. Things can get backed up very quickly. Um, obviously, as we go through the season, he gets caught up and all that, but there's that prime six-week period that um, he's nervous, you know, that everything does go smoothly. Um, so I, I, after having that conversation, I looked up a few numbers and summer of twenty-four and summer of twenty-five, very close in the numbers, it's only a four-ton difference of what is brought up to Rhode Island Resource Recovery, so over thirteen hundred tons in those two months and it's over a hundred trips up, up there. The composting, as you know, is going very well. See, another thing, when, uh, during the summer, the Thomas Housing, Thomas, uh, Property Housing. That was a big push to get that going, there was a lot of time spent, uh, getting that all, all ready to go for the fall. I've been working a lot with Jim Jeremia over the summer with the work that's going on now. On Beacon Hill and other, uh, aprons and, uh, coming up next year also. We had a water leak on Connecticut Avenue that needed to cut the road open there. Of course, that road was just paved less than a year ago. That one and the Ball Housing Sewer Water Connections, those road cuts are gonna be repaired next week, Monday it should be, um, including Connecticut Avenue. And then there's just, uh, the cemetery, uh, can't forget the cemetery. Through June, June through September, we had sixteen burials, um, fifteen cremation, one full. The cenotaph was in The Senataph was installed in June. And that is the monument that Karen Sprague, uh, installed. And that is, uh, there are spots on that for people to purchase. And it's for, uh, people that are not buried in the cemetery, might be buried elsewhere or out to sea or something like that. And where, and where they can be memorialized, uh, on that. And those are for purchase through the town and through, uh, Karen. It's beautiful. We got it in great location. It oversees sort of both sides of this. If you go down that center road of the cemetery, it's going to be on the right hand side, uh-huh, on the top of a hill. So you can see it from down below. You can see it from up top. It's really a cool spot. And then do a lot of work with GZA on the, the, uh, the Corn Neck Project and the Safe Streets for All. Lots of different little projects going on.
Mike, I know, uh, I called you a few times this summer, probably not frequently enough. Knowing how challenging the summer was for you and your, and, and your crew. And it blew me away every week, uh, how you were able to get done what you got done. To be able even just to maintain along roadsides and brush and trimming, um, when you're, when you're short the way that, that you are and have been. Is it's, it really is unbelievable, uh, what you guys are able to do. And I appreciate that.
Thank you. And, and I can say what's great is the guys really care. They really want it to look good. They, uh, they take a lot of pride in it. But I will, I will pass that on.
Can I ask you a quick question regarding the cemetery? Remember we were having some of that, like that underground survey done at the back? Is that finished? Is that?
I believe it is. It, it was more so at the Indian Cemetery, as it turned out. There was some clearing in the back section also, the northwest part of it. Did you get any, they're working on a report now?
On it right now. Um, so we don't have the final report yet. Oh, okay. It's forthcoming. Great. Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Sniffin.
All right. Well, just like everybody else, uh, it was a busy summer, um, for the Town Beach. I think it was probably our busiest summer. If not our busiest, one of the busiest we've ever, I've ever had in the last 10 years. You know, it went well. We didn't really have any major issues there. We had, did have seven lifeguards employed, which was great, um, for almost the entire season, which is. Sometimes it's, we lose kids early, but we had at least five through the season, which is nice.
Recruiting lifeguards still the issue that it used to be?
It's, it's going to be for forever. You know, we, we try to stay competitive with wages and we are, and it's just finding people that want to come out to Block Island and spend the summer. And, you know, live in a, live in the beach housing or live in the, in the Coast Guard house. Takes, some people don't like it, some people love it. So. Definitely very busy for us. Uh, the weather obviously started out not very strong in, uh, in June. But in, but July and August were stellar. So that's, that's really what drives the beach, you know, obviously. Camp Block Island continues to be successful. We had 198 kids enrolled in the 10 week sessions. So that's great. We max out right around 22, 23 with our transportation and number of counselors. That went well. Um, we had a Norman Riker did a soccer camp. I think it was his, I think it's his 30th year of soccer camp out here. 47 children enrolled over two sessions. So that was another great thing. We, the second year of our water exercise program. Was fantastic. Um, we had 148 participants over the course of it. We had a lot of, Sue Black was great and instrumental in organizing and getting instructor, instructors in, in place and everything. Um, um, that's going to be a program that's going to continue to grow and, and do well. And, and, uh, you know, we want to thank Champlin's for allowing us to be there. Great program there. Um, you know, our summer leagues were, were great. We weren't able to do a basketball league because the gym was being worked on this summer. But we were able to do our summer softball league. We had four teams of, uh, you know, at least 15 people on each team. So, uh, that was great. We had, uh, eight volleyball teams for our beach volleyball league. We had our soccer team, soccer league. We had four teams for soccer league with about 55 players in that league. So that's, you know, those are things that we were doing to keep the people, give them other options to do rather than go out to the bars or things like that. We also had a soccer tournament with, uh, six teams from the mainland came over and played in an all-day tournament against, uh, two Block Island teams. So that was fun. Uh, the triathlon continues to be huge. We sell out, we've been selling out the last two years. We went from 450 was our sellout to now 480. I think we're going to top it at 500. I don't feel like we can put any more than that on the road safely. I think that 500 would be where I would be comfortable maxing it out. And then, uh, yeah, uh, Ball of Ryan Park, there's some things we're going to address at Ball of Ryan Park. We need to talk about playground, uh, equipment. Replacement or refurbishing, cleaning up, getting that back. Heinz Field also, we're going to talk about things like, uh, the baseball field and, and the amount of money we spend in that relative to what we get back from it. There hasn't been a baseball program there at this, from the school in the last couple of years. So those are the things that we're looking at right now. But, uh, yeah, that's where we're at. Um, if anybody has any questions, I, I included in my report, some of the, some of the, you know, monetary breakdowns of the places, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you so much, Dave.
All right.
It's fabulous. Really terrific stuff. Anything else any on, on this side of?
No, just to thank the department heads and all of their staff for their work. We all know what the summer feels like and the fact that they continue to do a tremendous job is, is so much appreciated.
You know, one of the things that strikes me, uh, is, um, how much of a team there seems to be townwide. And I, I give you a lot of credit for that and, and, and your leadership for that. It really, it comes through. Anyway, thank you, guys. Uh, really appreciate it. Um, deer hunting. So, uh, if I can just have 90 seconds here. I've been thinking a lot about this deer hunting stuff and, um, it has, it has, uh, I have reached the conclusion that, I think I've been looking at it wrong. Uh, I'm, and I'm sorry for that, but I feel like we have essentially the same conversation twice a year, uh, once a year, 50 times a year. It's the same conversation. And as I've been thinking about this, and frankly, this has coincided with not just anecdotally increases in Lyme disease, but also increases in this alpha galle, uh, uh, stuff. Two, two members of our community I found out this week who were recently diagnosed. If you read the article about, um, what's going on on the vineyard, um, where there's this tremendous growth in, um, vegan grocery stores and restaurants because people, uh, uh, the, the, the spread of alpha galle has been, has been so, um, uh, rapid. But I think we have to shift away from viewing this as a deer management issue, uh, to viewing it as a, as a public health issue. The deer issue is a public health issue. Uh, uh, it has been, uh, I haven't, um, I don't think been as, uh, aggressive about that as I should be, but, but, you know, at, at some point, I mean, I was, if you, if you think about this, if we had an environmental issue in a community of our size that was making the number of people get sick who are getting sick now, um, on Block Island, the people would be going crazy about it. Uh, and I, I just think that we need to shift our perspective on this. I think if we're not prepared to deal with this as, with deer as a public health issue. We're going to be stuck in the same groove on the same record for the rest of my time here and for the rest of other people's time here. And I think cha, shifting that view is going to require some sacrifices in the community. And it's going to require things like, um, closing off, uh, uh, the areas for a weekend, uh, in, in the northern part of the island and closing off areas on the southwest, but you know, uh, doing that on a rotating basis. And saying, don't hike here. Bringing in people to, you know, make sure that, that, uh, uh, hikers like me, trail walkers like me. Know that they shouldn't go in a particular place because there's going to be baiting or there's going to be, um, a driven hunt. And the community getting significantly more aggressive about bending the curve, uh, on the number of deer we have. And the number of infections that we have. But that's not one, that's, and it, and it, and it's really important to say for me, it's not going to be one season. It's going to require a significant ongoing effort. And, uh, I don't know whether it's significant, but ongoing sacrifice, uh, on those, uh, weekends during the hunting season. And I'm sorry, but when I sit having breakfast with a 70 plus year old guy who just got diagnosed with alpha galle, who now has to carry an EpiPen because he's concerned about, going into anaphylactic shock because he has alpha galle. That, that just, uh, I'm, I, I, I don't think we can sit around and, um, go back and forth the way that we have over time. So at an upcoming meeting, uh, I have, I have it partially drafted, but I'm, I'm going to present a resolution, uh, that, uh, basically if, if, if folks agree to it, um, or it passes.
It's kind of handled as well. Give me a call on the 10, uh, 294-4555. Thanks.
Thanks, James. Would you mute? That basically says Block Island now wants to deal with this as a public health issue, uh, not as a, uh, deer management issue. I think we should be going to the Department of Public Health and to DEM to talk to them about all of the tools that we will need. If we need to go to the legislature, uh, to have special rules for Block Island because of our public health burden in this area. I think we need to do that as a priority. So anyway, I was the one who put this on and I mostly just wanted to get that off my chest. Anybody? Joe? Would you get, see Paul?
Just from, um, my own personal self. I had to come here earlier as the, I had to come here earlier as the department head.
Yes.
I, I was on the deer task force forever. And I think Keith, you have it right and that the shift that needs to come. Because the issue that we run into is we, for the most part out here, and it was all voted on for the past several years. Drastically reduce or eliminate the deer herd. The problem is that DEM controls a lot of the rules and regulations. And, and I like Dylan, the biologist, he and I are pretty good friends. We talk every once in a while. But his whole, from his schooling to where he is now, it's about herd management. We don't need to manage this herd. We need to get rid of this herd because it is a public health issue. And my thought on this really changed. I think Sam was probably eight or nine years old and we were going to see Sarah's parents up in Vermont. And he had gotten bitten by a tick and it turned into an infection in his knee. He had surgery on Christmas Day or the day before Christmas and spent the entire Christmas vacation in a hospital in Burlington, Vermont. Because of the deer and the deer ticks. And that kind of flipped my switch a little bit to they all need to go. So I think that's part of the problem is that the philosophy of what we would like to see versus what DEM, who controls our rules and regulations. And I think that's where you can have some of our state representatives and such. Sit down with the director of DEM and say, listen, we understand how that works on the mainland. That's not the problem that we have here. The problem we have here, as you said, is now it's not just the Lyme disease. Now it's all these other ones.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, I would be really, really angry if I could never eat beef again.
Yes, I know. Same here.
So that, that I think from, from my own personal perspective, having done the deer task, task force thing, like you said, same groove, same record over and over and over again. We talk about it. We can't ever get anything done. But they did at one point allow bending of a bunch of the rules for a company from Connecticut. So that precedent has already also been set. So they can't say we can't do that because they already did at one point. So I think that honestly is the track that you guys need to take is we're not managing the herd. The herd needs to go.
Thank you, Paul. Joe?
Well, you stole half my thunder, Paul. So that's okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to cut this a little shorter. Because I was hoping to get us, uh, exactly to that point where we are, which, uh, is in fact that we really are facing a, a public health, uh, crisis, uh, with, with the, uh, the current, uh, situation with deer. A couple of points I wanted to make, you know, this, we had our annual meeting, uh, you all know who I am, right? Joe Loia? I just, okay, for the record. But with Byra, I am representing Byra today. You know, we had our annual meeting and invited, uh, Professor Sam Telford, who some of you know, he's got a long history with, uh, the island. He's been involved in, um, doing various research on infectious disease related to ticks. You know, he's a professor of infectious disease and global health at Tufts.
Hey, guys.
And, um, he's, he's an expert on tick-borne diseases. And, uh, he made the point that, uh, there is absolutely a connection between critically lowering the number of deer and reducing, uh, tick, uh, or Lyme and related diseases. So, you know, there's, there's been debates about that. He went into great, great detail also on the relationship between rodents and mice versus deer. Not to repeat that, but the, um, his presentation is on our YouTube channel. So if anybody would like to re-educate, I'd highly recommend it because he gave a really informative, uh, presentation. Just to reiterate the point is there is a correlation between the incidence of disease and the number of deer on the island. So that's, that reinforces the point about where we are with a public health crisis. He also warned us, uh, about this whole issue of, um, the Lone Star Tick Population. Now, uh, the good news is, but he, he spent the day here and he was actually looking for ticks. He was tick whacking for most of the day. So he, he believes, uh, that we do not yet have a high incidence of Lone Star Ticks on the island.
To walk with me next summer.
Well, uh, I, I'm, I'm, he, he, he wasn't saying there are none. He wasn't saying there are none. And I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm giving you a professional's, uh, opinion at this point. In fact, there's a need for further research. His, his point, but his point was that we may not have a high incidence of, um, of Lone Star Ticks now. But we will within the next five years. He's, he's very, very familiar with, uh, the issues on Martha's Vineyard, done a lot of research on Martha's Vineyard specifically. So, uh, you kind of talked all about the, the Alpha Gal Syndrome and the, the impacts of that. But his point was we, we have a window, um, uh, but there's some urgency to managing, to reducing the deer population. If in fact, we want to, uh, stand a chance of, uh, having any mitigation of, uh, you know, the Lone Star Tick and this, the issues related to that. A couple of quick points. Uh, we've talked a lot about, um, deer counts. And again, I'm going to hit his position and I. And again, I'm going to hit his position and it certainly has been Byra's position as well, is that the number of deer is really not something that are on the island today is only relevant to enable us to manage our progress going forward. The actual number doesn't really matter. I think the number that we have is too many. That's, that's as far as we really need to go. We were a bit disappointed that we talked about a deer, you know, survey last February with DEM. And as of today, which is November, we still don't have any data. Unless it's come through.
No, I, just for the benefit of the rest of the room, it's unlikely that we'll see that before late fall, winter.
Yeah. So that's kind of a, again, there's, there's an urgency that's missing here because that's only one data point that would help us as we begin to put a longer term strategy together. But the fact is we, you know, we've waited how many months and we have nothing. So I don't, you know, I, I was able to give them a benefit of a doubt, the fact that they were doing this, these flyovers throughout the state. But we are the town with the most significant problem in the state. I mean, the numbers show that so that we should, Block Island should in fact be the highest priority for DEM with regard to any kind of deer.
But again, that's all deer and herd management as opposed to public.
Yes. Yeah. And I only raised that.
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying.
Yeah. You're, you're right.
If we shift the paradigm.
Yeah. So shifting the paradigm, I mean, we do not have yet a strategy for how we get there. I think what you're saying is let's make the case that this is about public health. Because if in fact we are able to do that, we may have more clout with the state and perhaps the legislature to take some of the more aggressive actions that are needed. My bottom line here was that we should, all of the things that DEM is recommending, I think we should take them seriously. And you may say, well, that's deer management. But I think we need to demonstrate some good faith towards those. I think the weekend hunting is probably the most significant example where, where they have recommended increasing number of days, weekend hunting, so forth. And that's all about enhancing recreational hunting. We're, we're beyond that. We're looking at really, as we said, reducing the herd significantly. But I think there are some things that they have done that we can fairly quickly and easily implement in order to show good faith. Because I think we need to be able to go back to the state in order, and get into a serious negotiation about some of the other more aggressive tactics, which are, you know, managed hunts, using silencers, hiring perhaps professionals, again, reconsidering that whole approach to truly drive that number down. Because the reality and the data shows that as much as we have increased the deer harvest, you know, over the past two years, we've had great numbers, thanks to some of our hunters who are in the room today. But the fact is, when you look at the, the statistics about deer procreation, the numbers that increase, those numbers are not moving the needle quickly enough, anywhere quickly enough to get us to where we need to be. I, I, I think again, because of some of the other conversations that have already taken place, I would just, I guess one other point is that we, we need, how do we make the decisions to form that kind of strategy? This is my last point. And I, we, we do not have the deer task force. I think there probably needs to be some kind of working group that can focus on an action plan.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay. Well, but.
I mean, it'll be on an agenda at some point when I finish this resolution.
Okay.
I'm not in love with finding a bunch of volunteers to do this. I mean, I, I think we have the infrastructure we need to take it, to take.
Well, if we have the, if we have the instructor, if, if we have that infrastructure, and I assume part of that is a lobbyist or lobbyists.
You, you talk about the deer task force pretty regularly. And I gotta say, I sat here at a table with vacancies on the deer task force for 24 months. So I, I, I don't necessarily buy into needing a new committee or structure.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying about wanting to make sure that we're moving in a direction. But I think we have the infrastructure we need. We have a, you know.
Well, if, if, then, then I would endorse that. If, if we have the infrastructure to turn this conversation around and to be more aggressive in pushing towards a broader deer reduction, then we would totally support that.
Yeah. First, we need support of the council. You're hearing from one person, by the way.
Yeah. So I, I just, related to that, I just want to give you one data point. Because as we, you mentioned weekend hunting. It's only one example. And I don't really think this whole discussion should focus on one issue like that. In fact, that's part of the issue is we, you know, there needs to be a much more well-thought-out sort of longer-term strategy that is going to get us there. I don't, I don't mean to create bureaucracy or a, a think tank. But just to use that one point, often enough, the, the statistics that would be cited is that people don't want weekend hunting. And I, this is a discussion that there's probably, we don't have time for now. But I just want to make the point that the data that we've looked at, and that includes a recent survey that Land Trust did. When you look at their numbers, in all, there's been multiple surveys and there is not an overwhelming resistance to considering weekend hunting. So to your point of we may need to be able to foot our foot down and in a, in a very thoughtful and well-thought-out way, you know, create some kind of, at least on a pilot basis, weekend hunting. I think there is room for that and there is not, based on the data and the research that we've done, as well as the Land Trust. There's not an overwhelming resistance to doing it if it's managed properly.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Chris Blaine. I, I can't believe it's like deja vu all over again. February 25th, all the things that are on this agenda are, I thought we'd driven a stake to its heart. So I'll start out by saying, the first thing I recommended at that last meeting was any meeting like this should be in the evening, not in the afternoon. And it should be advertised at least one, if not two weeks beforehand in the Block Island Times. Because half of the people I spoke to said, what meeting? What do you mean? What, what do you mean they're talking about weekend hunting?
This is our process. We have a work session. This is an opportunity for us to talk about an issue. We are not deciding anything. And when it comes to making decisions, it'll be a part of, of one of our evening meetings.
All right. So I can start out by telling you that I've spent as much or more time hunting on Block Island than anyone else. I don't care whether someone thinks so or not. This summer was the worst summer for ticks I've ever seen. So you have the law of unintended consequences. The deer population is down. I don't care what anyone says. I don't care what the, the 2,000 number, the 1,500 number, the 3,000, whatever number they want to pull out of their hat. There are less deer on this island now than I've seen in a very long time. And I hunt some pretty large properties and I've been out walking around. I don't think you can say that there aren't going to be problems with reducing the amount of deer. I don't think you're ever going to get what you want from DEM. As far as baiting goes, it's gone. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen because of chronic wasting disease. Baiting is not allowed for any reason, even if you want to apply a pesticide to deer to prevent ticks. Chronic wasting disease is spread when they congregate together and feed. Baiting is not going to happen. Suppressors? Forget it. Rhode Island is one of seven states that do not allow them. You're not going to change that law. Believe me. This is a blue state. You're not going to change it. People think that they're bad, they're evil. So what are you left with? At that meeting and two years ago, I suggested, how about just going for the low hanging fruit? Bring a refrigerator truck out here. If Byra and the other people that are doing so much complaining had gotten together and brought us out a reefer truck the last two weeks of October, and I had it here until just after Christmas, the number of deer taken would increase because the people that come out here from the mainland, as well as the local hunters, could simply put the deer in a refrigerator truck. And after 24 hours in that refrigerator truck, you could take them from Maine to Massachusetts without them going bad. And the guys from the mainland really have it tough because they can either butcher the deer and then they have to pack the meat in coolers and it will spoil fast. Or they have to ride around with it in a truck. They can't take it home, hang it up, wash it out. So they're pretty much screwed. That would, that would increase the number and it's the easiest thing to do. You call up, you get a truck over here, you work it out with interstate. We can dispose of all the deer that we can take. Center for Southeast Asians will take them by the truckload. There's not a problem. You don't have to skin them. You just have to gun them. You don't have to butcher them, put them in a box, send them over there. That's the low hanging fruit.
I think that's an important component of this. I agree.
I don't think you're going to see weekend hunting. Because it's such a small percentage of people on Block Island that would be involved, that the majority of people out here don't want it. It's the third rail as far as this goes. And I know what you're going to say. I think there are other things the council could look at. There is now a program underway where they're putting medication out for deer to stop them from getting Lyme disease.
Heard the contraception is.
No, not contraception. Contraception has to be sex specific. It's very expensive. This is not expensive. And Block Island would be one of those places where you should say, look, why don't you try us for a pilot program? Because this is a perfect controlled environment. The deer are not going to come in from another area. You could treat them out here. They're, they're given a medicine that prevents Lyme disease. They have other ones too. But what it does is it breaks that circle of infection that starts out with the tick, goes to the mouse, goes to the, the adult, on the deer, and back again. And once you break that, you've changed things. And this would be a perfect, just say to them, look, come out here and try it. I just, I really hope that we don't have to go through this two or three times a, a year. Because it just seems like.
Well, that's my point.
Okay. Well, the charge of the council is to drastically reduce the herd. So what you're talking about is have a referendum. But again, I would ask that the council.
Talking about a referendum. I'm talking about a shift in our focus from herd management to this being a public health issue.
You would need a referendum on that because I don't think the council can just go, that's it. That's the way it was done the last time. And it was a choice that was given to the people out here to reduce the herd or eliminate it. And they chose reduce.
But I mean, it's not how our charter works. We don't govern by referendum.
The referendum that I'm talking about.
I didn't know there was one.
Yes, there was.
But, but I, I mean.
Okay. All right. Said enough. Thank you.
You were great. And, and I, and I think the stuff that you suggest around the reefer, et cetera, I think all those things are imponent of a plan going forward. I don't think these are, you know, unique, discreet things. I, I, I don't, that, that's my opinion. I just think we need to refocus and make an effort and not have the same meeting over and over and over again. Please.
So I, I guess I, I take issue with the idea that we're refocusing. Because in the 30 years that we've been discussing deer, it seems to me it has always been intertwined with a, a public health issue. I mean, part of the problem along the way was that we had DEM with their focus and we could never get the Department of Health involved in any, at any issue at all. You, you seemed even at that last meeting that DEM was here, you know, encouraged that they were really going to get involved. I still hear things about weekend hunting and, you know, that's been a 30-year argument with DEM. It's just an unrealistic approach. But if we really want to talk about it again, I, I don't think this is a refocus. I think it's, you know, this agenda item said, in fairness to Chris, discuss deer hunting. So, you know, it didn't say, we'll, we'll think about this and we'll come up with some other things. A lot of what's been out there has been out there forever. So, yeah, I'll, I'll sit through another 20 years of this conversation. But I, I take issue a little bit over the fact that it's a refocus. I don't think it's ever been a refocus.
Okay. Molly?
So I, I think we have, if we were to draw a Venn diagram here of, you know, do we have deer management? We have the health issue that, that continues to grow and continues and continues to grow. Every, every conversation I've had on the boat recently with people has, has somehow come back to the alpha gall and how many people have it and how many people have Lyme disease this summer. And I, I don't think, I, I don't, I don't agree that, you know, people didn't know about this meeting. There are more people in this room right now than we've had at a meeting anytime recently that I can think of. So, I mean, the only thing that got more people here was short-term rentals. So, um, yeah, except this group isn't throwing tomatoes. So it is an important, it, it, it's an important topic. I think the, you know, the other topic that isn't quite as exciting is that, is there's also a species reduction that goes on. And I'm talking about like vegetation, that the deer, they destroy vegetation and they are killing species out here. They are killing species of wildflowers. They are killing. And then we have these invasive species that sort of move in and take over that space. I know that that's not a public health problem. I know that that's not a deer management problem. But I, I'm just going to say again that not having my daffodils bloom in the spring is pretty annoying. And I, I think everybody here feels that way, right? Like it's, there's, it's an additional problem caused by the deer. And it's a, it is a big deal that they're destroying the vegetation that the birds eat and that other animals eat. So yes, I am in agreement that the, the health, the health problems are becoming exponential and these are things to worry about. We all know people who've been hospitalized with Lyme. We know people who are now having, like, the alpha gall is a big deal. For anybody out there listening who doesn't know what it is, it, it's, I, I don't know if I'm going to explain this correctly, but it basically means you can't, your body can't process the proteins from red meat anymore that you're facing the rest of your life, not being able to eat.
Or dairy, mammals.
The what? Mammals. Mammals.
Some people, it's also milk, cheese.
Milk, cheese, dairy. That's a very big deal. So I don't think it's extraordinary to like double down a little bit and look at our other options. I really don't think it's a big deal to take a, a bigger look at this. So.
All right. We sat. Oh, Doug, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I mean, I saw you, but I didn't see you had your hand.
I only stuck my hand up this moment here. I'm fine with getting rid of all the deer. The question will be how.
Right.
I'm not going to address some of the things on there. A lot of those I'm opposed to. I'm going to agree with Chris Blaine that this is the worst tick season that I've seen and encountered. I probably got 30 bites in June and the deer are down in my neighborhood, way down. We're down to three deer in the yard now instead of a dozen. So the deer are down, but the ticks are not. So get rid of all the deer. You think the ticks are going to leave? And you have many different kinds of ticks now. They're going to find something else to live on. That's not going to answer it. I agree with Paul. I think the DEM is the problem. Been 40 years, Nancy, since we sat in the school library and argued with them over and over and over. And perhaps it's time to get legislation to get the DEM off Block Island. Sharpshooting, they couldn't handle sharpshooting. They hired sharpshooters for silencers and most of the blinds they set up over than 50 feet of a state highway or a private right-of-way or somebody's house. That's not competency. So think about what you want to do. The other thing I'll suggest is the last time the DEM had this huge meeting at school, I don't know how many years ago. And I didn't say much, but I said two things. One is put a bounty on them like crows. And the other thing is make it a commercial product. Be able to sell venison. The next year, the town put the bounty on the deer, which is one of the reasons why the numbers are down, way down. So I would push to make it a commercial product. You want to, you want to get rid of something, make something extinct? Put a dollar sign on it. And that deer herd will go down so fast. So.
A couple, couple of things, Doug, because I, thank you. One is I, I may be irrationally optimistic, but Terry Gray. optimistic, but Terry Gray, the current director of D E M, has actually been terrific and responsive to us, no matter what the issue. So I that gives me some sense of optimism. But honestly, as I've thought about what you would go to the legislature with, I I really wonder whether one of the things is the idea that Block Island controls its own deer herd. It's a unique enough environment and situation that that may be the thing that makes makes sense, and may be better for them from their perspective, too. Sorry, Tristan.
With the designation that you said with the public health that might help advance that cause, Doug brings up an.
I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
About the bounty. That's one thing, but the first one here, the count, and it would be nice to accelerate at least our section. I'm sure, Amy, that you've asked for that. The portion, I I realize they did the whole state.
That wasn't something they could.
Fortunately, they didn't let us know, but they came and they flew over the area, and they spent around nine minutes here. Granted, you know, whatever technology light are, you know, maybe they can do it that quickly, but it would be nice to get those numbers before we start.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
We've we've said pretty please. We said pretty please in.
So. I just want to say that the D E M is opposed to what you're doing. Their job is to maintain a deer herd. They don't want to get rid of it. So the D E M has to step aside and get out of the way.
Yeah.
Phil?
For many of us in this room, going back from, going back, like you said, forty years, the Jim full, this is the same story that we're hearing. And the D E M, I agree, the D E M is talking about management. We're talking about reduction down to as much as we can. I am steadfast against weekend hunting. I have been as the chief of police, and I am now. And the reason being is because this is the D E M's way of managing, that we open it up, and then we end up with a lot of people that come out hunting, that I believe where it becomes unsafe. However, I think, Keith, you bring up a lot of good points. I am very open-minded. If we had a an area that was corded off, controlled from that end of it, I would look at. But their idea is to open up weekend hunting, so you get more people that can come out here. My concern is, they don't know the lay of the land. We have houses that have been hit. We have more people out that out and about. And it's not just if you're in in the in the path getting hit. The chief can tell you, there's a number of houses that were hit, because the way the the crow flies, it, you know, it's, it's, you know. So that's the reason my concern on the weekend hunting is, I'm opposed to opening it up to people that don't know the lay of the land from that end of it. But I will stay open-minded to the fact that if, because I I think you're bringing up some good points. I don't think there's any question. It's a health issue. I think we all agree. We know from that end of it. So to not not be that end of it, I think we it's certainly worth looking at what some of these options are. And I know that we've gotten resistance on them before. I think what Chris had something when they said they wouldn't allow you bait them, because all the deer can come together. I remember the the gentleman talking about last year, and they could get a disease and and they could be wiped out. So I I just think that, I I just think that I've, when I when I take a stance, and my position is against it, it's because of the the group of people wouldn't have the lay of the land. But I do think we can explore some of these other, where we said, if there's an area closed off, something, to me, that's a controlled hunt with people that have knowledge of the land and so forth. So, but I do think I do think it's worthy of exploring this. And I think we're going to have to take a position with with the with the D E M, whether we're successful or not. I think we've we've taken a position that this hasn't, this isn't working, long-term for us.
Right.
And we need to look.
And that's the that's that's a great phrase to use, I think.
But I think, but really, I think their 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 idea of, if we have them the weekend, the the problem goes away, and I don't believe that's the case. And I think that the safety issue is a big concern.
All right. So we're going to learn a lot here. Who goes first, Heather or Turtle?
Heather.
Just ago, when the, when I was on deer task force, there was a problem with the Department of Health didn't want to overstep the D E M's authority. So I think that that would probably be where we start, is at the Department of Health, and really just what you were saying. Just say, it's time. We're way past the point. And the other thing to look at, as I'm sure a lot of people have heard, is the idea that they're doing on Martha's Vineyard, where they are releasing genetically modified mice who are not carrying the Lyme disease, because it's the mice that carry the Lyme disease, not the deer that carry the Lyme disease. So they are doing a project on Martha's Vineyard, where they are sending out mice that are genetically modified, and then hoping that that will break the cycle.
Those those ideas always make me really nervous and think about, think about, do you guys remember that story? Is it a, no, it's like, I think it was, I think it was Guam, where the military was having a hard time with brown snakes, and so they introduced rats, but nobody realized that one was nocturnal and one was nocturnal. So with rats and. [laughing] Turtle?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I mean, I've only had alpha gale for maybe eleven years now. I think I'm probably the first one out here. So I just got retested, maybe a month and a half ago. And who calls me to tell me what my results are is Department of Health. They're on it.
Yeah.
There's a shift going on. I think we, I think we have a chance of changing it.
Yeah. Thank you, Turtle. The other thing that I learned the recently from someone out here who has alpha gale is, I I never knew this, but subsequent bites can make your allergy more severe. You know, you know what I mean? Which hence people bring carrying EpiPens, even though they haven't had, it's like bee, you know, you know, with with bee sting allergies. Anyway, anybody else? Chris, do you want to?
Just a couple of things. D E M's been pretty specific about what they want. They always have been. D E M stands for don't expect much. In the nineteen sixties, I watched when Curt Gowdy came out here with ABC Wide World of Sports, with Collier Stramsky and Ted Williams, to go pheasant emptying. And they went with Arthur Rose and Al Judge, the chief enforcement officer from Rhode Island D E M, on a Saturday. We were horrified. You know, you can't shoot pheasants on Saturday. The pheasants didn't know what struck. They had a beautiful day. They shot more pheasants than anybody ever did. Over the limit, Saturday. It's okay, D E M's handling it. I never forgot that. That was my first impression with D E M. We used to have damage permits on Block Island. Well, they took those away because we don't allow a regular hunting season. Okay, so we got a regular hunting season. They took them away anyway. We don't allow weekend hunting.
Interesting. Yeah.
I I was on the first deer committee. I've been on several deer committees, and they're all people that volunteer and have great ideas. So again, going back to low-hanging fruit, this year, and you can do this tomorrow, change the structure of the bounty. It was recommended by D E M. Pay two hundred dollars for a doe, and a hundred dollars for a buck, or two hundred and fifty dollars. Structure it so that more does are taken than bucks. And and never mind about them dropping in, because anybody knows a buck from a doe. And if you can't tell the difference, probably shouldn't be hunting. I'll put it that way. There's no desperation involved here. There's people in this room that are as good with a firearm as any professional that you're going to hire, maybe better. You know, I heard white buffalo tell me that they never miss. Well, that's when I walked out, because you know what? No matter how long you've been doing this, sooner or later, you're going to miss. But the point is, I would rather have three or four really good shots, really good hunters, than no Block Island, than thirty or forty that are coming over, woo-hoo, it's Saturday morning, let's go shoot a deer. We don't have any wardens, and you're not going to get them from the police department. They're not trained the same, and they don't have the manpower. And remember one thing, no matter what else, one accident on Block Island is going to do away with hunting. And that goes, that's your, that's your biggest tool to reduce the herd right now, the bounty system and firearms. Archery is nice. It's never going to solve it. Remember this, too. When you, when you go out and look around for deer on Block Island, the deer were here before anybody was here. Native Americans hunted deer on Block Island. So as far as invasive species go, that's us. And we've screwed up this island more than any invasive species ever has, because the Manassasian Indians would probably tell you that if they were still alive.
Sure.
As far as the health issues go, I'll tell you this right now. Alcohol and drugs do more damage on Block Island in one season than Lyme disease. Between domestic abuse, between the other crimes that aren't reported, the DUIs, I'm telling you right now, it's in the wastewater. I mean, if anybody watched the news the other night, they're in a pilot program now. Fentanyl, cocaine, heroin, all the drugs that you, you know, a regular plethora of drugs are in the wastewater.
Yeah.
So, and as far as alcohol goes, every time I turn around, they're issuing another liquor license. I mean, I don't know how many we have now, but it's plenty. So, like I said, low-hanging fruit. Change the bounty structure. Amy can do that tomorrow. The council could vote on it at your next meeting. It's a very, very simple thing to do. And encourage more does to be taken, and reduce the herd that way. Let's work with what we have right now, instead of waiting a year to do something which, and as far as the counts go, if the D E M can't get a count to us, when they did it in February, something very wrong.
Yeah.
Keith, I I think one thing we have to keep in mind, we do have a good relationship with the D E M.
Yes.
I I think, and with the office, and we deal with not just with deer, with a with a lot of things. So I think we we may have different philosophically here, and we're going to have to take a hard stance, but that doesn't mean we can't take it in a professional and a respectful manner from that end of it. So we just can't let the frustration of one roll over to the others. And I think we'll be most productive.
Yeah, I try to be really cautious about that, because I think Terry has been nothing but terrific and responsive to us.
I'll just end with, I, you know, I'll be I'll be hopeful, but a simple matter of getting a deer count that Amy can't get, and it's now November, you know, doesn't give me a lot of confidence.
I I don't disagree. That's why I think we need to step up and focus. Amy?
So, do we have a deadline that we have to make a decision on this?
No, I just wanted to raise it at a work session to have this conversation, and it will.
Yeah. So I think it would be good to have D E M on our side.
Oh, yeah.
I think that we could have a lot of, you know, muscle behind us.
Yeah.
They had some great ideas last year.
Yeah.
And none of them were easy.
No, none of it's easy.
But I like where you're going, where you're revisiting this. I think it's great. And not everybody's going to be happy with the solutions, but the goal has to be reducing deer. I don't care what sex they are, honestly. But I would love to be involved in some work session if you're looking for bodies.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. We have people who need to catch boat. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second, although in favor indicate by saying aye, we're adjourned.